Well, I am in ministry.
Let's call a meeting to order.
But I'm in ministry.
Tammy will be absent for the study session. She'll be here for the city council meeting.
Briefing.
Ten minutes is the time. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of May 6, 2019. Ron.
I'm not concerned. I have no concerns at this point.
We're in good, we'll be in good hands.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, I thought we might, if we wanted to talk about the budget item that's on the agenda. Aaron could go ahead and show some slides down here if you want, because I know all we have on the agenda is, is Mike and an update on the project that we have over on, Ron, where's the Randolph and Forest Street.
Randolph and Forest. Oh, yeah, no, if we can save some time upstairs.
That's a good idea, to save time in the weeks to come.
Well, I didn't look up what item that was, but Aaron, do you want to come up and start talking about that?
Can I do that now?
I think, if you, if you want to, I think it's a good idea.
Well, don't, don't let us forget.
Actually, Aaron had the idea, and gosh, if I'd had it in time, we would have put it on the agenda that way, so it's a great idea.
What are the other items we have of the study session?
Cooper and the Fourth Street Bridge.
Do that.
I'm, I'm fine.
If you would rather than go first, that's fine, then I know exactly how much time I have to take, because I have more than enough material.
Let's do three and four, and then, then.
And then do the budget.
It's not going to take very long.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Item three, the Advanced Development Authority Quarterly Update from Mike Cooper. Coop?
Up there, or where do you want me?
Yep.
Yes, you gotta get on TV.
I was on TV this afternoon. I know y'all know you have a great asset with your network there, that we did a good interview today, kind of updating on things we did at VDA. First of all, I, I know tonight's the transition night. We're going to have new mayor, new councilman and all that, and mayor and councilman that I've worked with all the year, over the years, thank you for what you do. I know, at least in your term, mayor and, and his terms, a lot of things going on. I mean, you know, all the activity out of Vance, whether it started with the, the joint use hangar, then we went to the runway, then we needed a parking apron, because every plane in the world, all kinds of aircrafts there, and then, and now the new terminal. So there's a lot, just on those things alone, not advanced, and we've done, you know, a redundant water system, land, roads, all kinds of other things. So thank you for, for what you've done. You guys have done a great job, so appreciate it. I know you're not leaving, so we'll still, still see and still work on things, but appreciate all that you've done. First item is, we've been working on airspace legislation for the last three years. Last year, we thought we had it, and the way you got to build wind turbines in the state was agreed upon mitigation or a conditional hazard from FAA. Of course, we found that that did not solve the issue, because some entities weren't even getting conditional hazard from FAA and building without approvals. And, and if Department of Defense, if any of the services gave a full-out objection to FAA, they could still get a conditional hazard, which per our previous bill meant they could still build, and that would have been a disaster for military training routes and all kinds of other things. So, the, the new language that we just passed last week, it'll become law probably tomorrow, I guess. The governor could sign it today. If he doesn't sign, it just becomes active after Wednesday. But the way you build now in Oklahoma is you have to have all adverse impacts cleared by the Department of Defense, by the clearinghouse, that through a mission compatibility letter that will state that, and you have to have a conditional no hazard. There's no other state that has that. So now, all the decisions will be left up to the experts, because we never wanted heavy regulation permitting and all of that. We just want proper siding. We don't want to impact negatively the defense industry in our state, the second-largest employer in the state of Oklahoma, usually highest per capita income in the regions. We also want wind energy. We want alternative energy, so we just want to make sure that both, both entities can work. So we now have that. So it took us a couple of years to do it, and we worked with wind to make sure they were all on board with this as well. I think they understood that with the violations they had last August with a company that was building with no approvals, that they were, you know, going to accept something that was actually workable, and we left it to the experts to give us the right answer, as opposed to having heavy regulation permitting and all that. So, so we're, we've done that. The next thing that we've been working on, and we've been working with Inhofe, Lucas, and others on your improved water rates for your water storage for Call Lake, I think originally it was coming around the four million, it's going to be upwards of eight million or more, trying to work a situation to get better rates, at least for defense-type communities, because the Defense Department has scored all bases across the US, not just Air Force, but all of them, so this is an issue, and we know there's going to be other entities that are going to be doing some of the similar things like we're doing. So, I feel comfortable that we'll probably get something done there. The other thing, my job is always stay close to whoever the new wing commander is. First thing, I go meet with Corey Simmons. Of course, he, you know, I told him what we were about, how we work community, state, and federal, working together to help you increase mission, reduce costs. Corey was not bashful, he was not shy, as you all know, and the first thing he told me, he said he needed a dorm. You want me to build you a dorm? And he said, yes, sir, I, I need a dorm. So, a hundred, a hundred-bed dorm, so I said, well, you tell us that's what you want, this group will figure out a way to do that. So, we have two options on that. One, defense community infrastructure, I mean, intergovernmental support agreements is our public-to-public, public-to-private, P4 initiative. We moved that from five to 10 years, and now we're working on 10 to 20 years. What that means is, community can do agreements, or the Defense Department, any of the services to do agreement with the city to do virtually anything, like build roads, do your trash, do whatever, and, oh, by the way, build you a dorm if you want to. The other thing that we're trying to do is work special legislation in the National Defense Authorization Bill that would say, well, we're going to, we're going to direct the services, whether it's Air Force, Army, or wherever, we need these really bad, that we're going to direct them to do an agreement with you, a long-term agreement, do a pilot project at Base XYZ, and of course Vance would be one of those. So, I'm hoping here, pretty quickly, that we're probably going to have two methods or two abilities to do this, two, two methods to do it, so the onus will not be on me or you to build him a dorm, that, that, what it will be is, the Air Force has got to decide, do they want to do a long-term agreement with us to build it? And, and I think we're getting closer to that. The other thing, we just got the, the next, the second year, is right at 140,000 to help you build your terminal out there. I went out there today, and that's really well under the way, most of the work, you know, I got the roof on, so that, that's really going well. I think that's going to be completed sometime in July. Of course, you just completed your joint land use study, that's an airspace protection effort around here. The Defense Community Infrastructure Program, this is another way to help you with your water project. Last year, working with Inhofe, got this put in the Defense Authorization Bill, it was authorized. We're working now to get it appropriated, and that essentially is where DOD decides special projects that communities and state can marry up federal dollars to get projects done, like alternative energy, oh, like water resiliency, these are things DOD needs. So, they would select them. The way it would work, if they put a pot of money here, then they would probably put five to 10 million at those type of projects. As you all know, Vance is probably somewhere close to 15% of our water supply, so again, at the end of the day, if they put money in that project, what that means is, they have skin in the game. So, we're, we're about to get that done, and of course, our entire delegation is working with the appropriators to get that, get that completed. The other thing that, last year, working with the Office of Economic Adjustment, that's the entity between the Defense Department and communities and states, actually, it was two years ago, we got about a $2 million grant for, and I, I worked, to the Military Planning Commission, I worked with OSU-IT to do this study of the state of Oklahoma. What's our defense industry? What is it? Who impacts, who works with our bases in the state? What's good, what's bad about it? How could we impact it, make a difference there? Well, that study is done, and there's about 1.7 million left over, and of course, I've worked with Brent Kissling from Department of Commerce, the Governor's Office, and others to figure out, well, okay, how can we best utilize that money? What do we want to throw it at? It isn't just Vance issue, but it's Tinker, Altus, and the aerospace industry as a whole, is we need a pipeline of aerospace workers, whether they do propulsion, aircraft maintenance, whatever. I think what you'll see happen, I also worked with Marcy Mack from the career tech world, so I think what you'll see happen, you'll probably see a, a series of entities built across the state, probably see a hub in Oklahoma City, just because, you know, Tinker's probably adding about 1,500 workers real quickly, engineers, also aerospace, you know, aircraft maintenance, things like that. And, so you probably see a, a facility there, you'll probably see one or so in the outline areas, but the whole area, whole idea is, is to build, you know, where we have a continuous pipeline of, of either Oklahoma men and women, or out-of-state that want to come here and get training for that. So we have a continuous pipeline, because for him, as you know, our, our aircraft maintainers out there are all civilians, and so they're third and fourth generation, been there 30, 40 years, most of them, and so they're getting ready to retire. So they're, they've been a concern out there. We used to have that training facility out there, if you remember when Dr. Straight was here in the day, we had that out at Woodring, but what, the problem with that was, we had it for about five years, and there was not a pipeline for jobs to go. There was, there weren't any, so we shut that down, because there wasn't a need, but now they think there is. So, I think that you'll see this happens, we'll probably leverage those dollars for that. One other thing that, another grant that, that we are just now getting, we'll probably go out to bid in a couple of weeks, is we're going to, and I'm utilizing the, the Aeronautics Commission to do this, is we'll, the, the money will come to the Military Planning Commission, and I'll, we'll work with them to select a contractor to go out and do a mapping of all of our military training routes, our runways, our bombing ranges, drop zones, weather radar, everything that impacts in our state. So that way, our governor, legislator, anybody that wants to come into our state and do business, they know where the issues are at. We want you to be here, but here's, we got to make sure we protect this as well. So, that's about a $1.5 million project. That'll take about 12 months to complete, they'll work with all the services to get that done. So anyways, a lot on our plate. I know DC trip, appreciate the ones of you that are going, I don't know who all's going, but we'll tee up these same issues, as you know, so I, I think we, there'll be a lot of good news to come, and like I say, I want all the pressure to be on Colonel Simmons, so he can decide if it's okay to do an agreement with us.
Pronouns matter. It's not me. We'd already be building it.
So anyway, unless you've got any questions, that's kind of all I have.
Questions?
Mike? Yeah, Coop, I got a quick question for you. I know that Congress and the President are talking about infrastructure now. In case that ever came together and there was funding, I know you're tracking, ensuring that we get near the top of the list on, on that money too, if it's ever available.
Yeah, in fact, the way we got the, the Defense Community Infrastructure Program done in the first place, because when we worked with congressional leaders, we also had to work with White House policy folks, this program is actually mirrored after what the President and others wanted to do with the nation's infrastructure. In other words, marry up state and community dollars to do, you know, projects, so to use everybody's money to make it go further. So that's really what, how this is to work, so yeah, we'll be right in the middle of that.
Mike, thanks for doing your job.
Thank you for letting me. It's a good time. Plus, now I'm going to get to see Jerry Allen. Now, you know he's only here, so you can have food.
I have a question. On the, the wind turbines and the legislation you described, who's going to be the police?
Well, what they have to do is, a wind developer has to, you know, file with Corporation Commission. Once they do, they then have, that, that is given to me, then I make sure, ensure that 100% communication between the military services and wind. Then I have to give in 30 days also, first initial response, of course, I work with their airspace folks, what is the initial response or concerns with development XYZ? Well, so then, that goes directly to the Department of Defense Clearinghouse, and then the hard work begins, working with the services to figure out, because sometimes some things can be mitigated, sometimes they can't, and then looking at the big picture on MTRs, approaches to runway, the impact for weather radar and all that. So the police now, I mean, that was another thing that changed in this bill. Now we have enforcement, because if you recall or saw any of the effort from up around Hinton, where a company decided to build with no approvals, well, we finally got them stopped, but the reason it took so long, we found out in, in July, but it took us till the end of August, first September, to get them stopped, because no one knew who was to be the enforcer. So the enforcers are the Corporation Commission and Aeronautics. In other words, if you had a violation now, which I'm not sure that we will now, but if you do, then you, these are the two entities that would take them to, to court, to get them stopped. Currently, on the issue at Hinton, the, the, I was finally able to get the Attorney General intervene, and so he represents me and the, and the Military Planning Commission to have that stopped, and it's been stopped since August, and so they're still working through all that issue to see if they can get mitigated, you know, build here, not there type thing, and, and they haven't received approval on that. And again, at the end of the day, the good thing about our thing, it is a, could be a quick process, but until you get adverse impacts cleared with Department of Defense, so if you're the industry, it really kind of more forces you, I think, to negotiate that out, you know, because you have to have that done before you can, you know, build. So I, I think a lot of it, and most, and Colonel Simmons is telling me if I'm wrong, I mean, I think a lot of the companies now are trying to have more communication even prior to filing at the commission, so they understand where the issue is at.
The biggest pressure right now, Rob, is the tax credits for, for wind to end in 2019, right? So, there's a, a lot of negotiations that wouldn't be happening right now, and trying to get their projects started before 2019 is ending. So, I, I'm talking with these folks quite often, trying to find a, a way forward. The hardest part is that, when you want to build a wind farm inside a 13-mile radius of Vance, I got a hard time saying yes to that ever. You know, right, because, just, just because, so it, it is touchy, because I'm not trying to be an obstructionist, but the biggest thing I would tell the commission is that, if we allow this to happen, you don't get to be surprised when your BRAC score comes back poorly. You don't get to be surprised. You know, we can be mad, but we don't get to be surprised, you know, because every one of those chips away at that, whether you want to believe it or not, it just does.
You can tell, Mike, Cooper's very close to the source. He's one of the two that have to do it.
But I'll tell, but I'll tell you though.
I'll tell you.
For truth and advertising, though, there are several projects that have grandfathered approval that I don't like, at all, but there's not really a way for me to do anything about it. New projects, all we got, there's a way forward, but grandfathered existing projects, we have good actors and bad actors. Fortunately for us, we have one very good actor who's trying to mitigate with us, that, you know, it'll probably be something that we can all live with, but some of the, some of our other actors are not as easy to deal with, and if they build them, I'll, I won't have any power to stop them.
And Rob, when this first started, about three years ago, we get wind in a room, their attorneys, their lawyers, we get, and they, their expert, they were utilizing, was the former first director of the Clearinghouse, former, he's retired Colonel over the ranges at Nellis, so he's clearly an aerospace guy, expert and all that. And then we get, you know, all of the services, including the Army, Shepard, Tinker, Altus, Vance, all of them in a room. So, okay, what's important to protect? So, DOD folks all get up there and talk about MTRs and all of that, and we had the, the wind experts get up there, and you know, of course, I'm a pretty simple guy, and listening to all this, I'm not an expert, not a pilot or anything, but when you hear what they're saying, I said, well, let me get this right, is that, so, military is what, wind saying? Is that what you're saying is important to protect, what they're saying? And of course, they all agreed. So I said, well, folks, we don't want to do anything more or less than what you all agree in this room is what's important to protect. So, again, it's taken us three years, and we're finally to that point. In fact, wind, the National Wind Association, regional wind folks, and, and others in the wind, everybody agreed to this language, because they, you know, they, they felt like it was important as well. Anything else? All right. Again, congratulations, Mayor, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, discuss Randolph Avenue and Fourth Street Bridge Replacement Plan. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Just want to introduce Morally here, we'll do the presentation, but wanted to note that we do have a biannual inspection program that actually is through the Department of Transportation, Oklahoma Department of Transportation, on our bridge program. On the Randolph Street Bridge at Fourth Street, that is, actually, has a box on both ends, so it's, you don't really see that bridge. We think we had, we had some real problems getting inspection on it. We were able to put a, an access to that site, to this last year, and got a quality inspection done, and Morally cut us here, our project engineer, to present the findings. Morally?
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Mayor. Robert, see, I'm going to slide right here. It's the, yeah, box structure on East Randolph, and the overview, we got about 71 bridges all over the city. We have a biannual inspection that will be done by Oklahoma Department of Transportation. They administer the program, city participates in the program, and I have some findings of the inspection report, and also recommendations. This is the map of the city of Enid, and you'll see all the bridges along the North Boggy Creek and West Boggy, and some of the bridges scattered all over the city. It's a Gharriett Road, Van Buren, the location. And this is the location of the current bridge, East Randolph, Fourth Street, just orientation. This is the.
Exchange.
Exchange Park, and this is the Don Hoskins Park. So there is an existing creek right there, and this is the box structure right here, and there's a box culvert going north. And these are the, some findings from the inspection report, and you can see corroded steel and spalling concrete, and several of the beams, north and south of the box. Some more pictures. Some utility lines along the bridge. And this is the location of the bridge, reference to the street. You're looking, this is the south side, and this is the, this is the east direction. And there are two cells in this bridge, in this box, and the pictures, what you have seen so far, on the, these two locations, they are bad. And the actions were taken so far, is the bridge was downgraded to three tons, and there are no trucks on the bridge, and the traffic is reduced to the middle two lanes, where the bridge is in good sound condition, structurally sound, and the detour in place for the trucks to go around. And the preliminary report says there are two, two types, it can be fixed. One is adding C-string beams and also new beams. The two beams, the two options to do, they need to install the vertical support. The vertical support takes, is going to construct the hydraulic flow, and also the accessing to replace these structures, we need to take the deck off from somewhere else. So, those are the issues, and the recommendation is to replace the bridge completely, that's a long-term solution, and that will be good for hydraulic capacity, and also provides the safety, and it's a cost effect. The bridge repair is more costly, and it doesn't give you permanent structure, permanent solution, and also it requires a deck removal to provide access to put the new beams and stuff like that, and also it constructs the hydraulic capacity. So, we got a.
Where do you actually access this bridge at?
Um.
My yard? Is it?
Uh.
I, no, I, I didn't, I, you know, I've driven over that a million times, and I never realized there even a bridge.
Right here, sir.
Have you given any thought to closing that bridge?
Sorry?
Is, is that bridge as bad as the one on South Leona Mitchell Boulevard?
Uh, yeah.
And it's closed?
Yep.
And this one carries a lot more traffic?
Yeah, this one.
Carries a lot of traffic.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying, this one carries a lot more traffic than the Leona Mitchell Bridge.
Sure. And Leona Mitchell is closed.
Yeah.
But he's also saying that two middle lanes are sound.
Two middle lanes, yeah.
Is that correct?
So, this, like, you can see further south, these beams are in good shape, so we don't have to close the entire street for temporarily, so that's why these portions of the bridge is closed. So the traffic is restricted to these two lanes.
Yeah, I might also, might also say, that on Leona Mitchell, we had, the deck was, we actually did a deck repair, a deck was falling through, so we tested the remainder of the deck, and we could not get any up to test up to standards, so that was the reason. And Leona Mitchell, we had no deck sections that were adequate. Where here, it's the beams, and it's just the outside beams, so the, the beams in the interior are still adequate, at least for the reduced load that we have on it. That's, that's been.
But you restrict truck traffic, you're not going to.
Yes, no truck traffic, free time limit. Why is Fourth Street closed up to that intersection?
They need to turn this way. That's the reason.
Oh, I mean, but it was, I mean, presumably trucks could come up Fourth Street and make a left turn, just like a no right turn only.
Right.
But there's that, but Fourth Street's blocked off entirely for half a block.
I don't have it.
Yeah, go back to the, the map that showed, eh, let's see. I think it's the last map on your slideshow. Yeah, keep going. There you go. Yeah, from the two red lines, Fourth Street's blocked entirely there, presumably trucks could make like a, coming, could left turn onto Randolph, but it's just shut down. I mean, I think, yeah, because they'd be coming down that right lane, and we just felt for the safety purpose, we should keep them away, keep them off of that section, we don't want that section to fall in. Yes, they could make a left, but they're going to, they may cross, they may cross the edge of that beam to, as that is in poor condition, so. Sure. Just don't want them, just want to keep them doing that.
We've also marked Randolph as no trucks, right?
That's correct.
On that section, so it might be confusing if we allowed them to.
Well, I just worry about there, I've seen a lot of traffic coming up Fourth and going up Maple, and, you know, tearing the hell out of Maple, of the neighborhood road there, and, you know, just don't want, the, Maple is in great condition right there anyway, and I don't know how long this is going to take, but if Fourth Street's going to be closed for six months, that we're going to have, you know, a block and a half or two blocks of Maple, and then whatever's next, I guess Fifth Street to worry about after.
Is the detour at Fourth Street, or is it farther to the east?
Fourth Street. It's at Fourth Street, yes. Yeah, that section of Fourth Street, north of Randolph, is closed. Any through traffic, because we don't want them crossing the bridge at Randolph. Walker has the same problem on the west side, going north from Randolph. Fourth Street turns into Walker, for God knows what reason, going north. So that chunk of Walker between Randolph and Exchange Park is just beat to hell, and there are so many trucks going up there to get back to Fourth Street. And again, likewise, I worry if we're going to have this, I mean, if this is going to take, I mean, I know we have a budget item, but to get it engineered and built is going to take a long time, I'm just, we're going to tear up a lot of other really bad roads with truck traffic, if that's all we've got for a while. So we should budget with fixing that too, because, you know, Lou.
Sure. And one thing we, you're, you're right, Commissioner, and that would be funds-dependent, as you know, but we might want to look at the detour routes, if there's a way to detour them on a better road somewhere else to keep them off of that. I know they're still, if they have business there, they're still going to try to get back there, which is why they were on there, but that's an immediate thought I have. I don't know if there's a better way to detour them on better roads already, so.
I mean, Randolph and Fourth end up carrying a lot of, a lot of traffic and a lot of bigger truck traffic to get up north on Fourth Street, and then AT&T has a truck that gets, makes a delivery every day right there, and there's more than you think.
I think we could probably visit and see if there's a better detour plan, if, but if not, what, what is the, you're going to probably tell us the estimated rough timeline to get the bridge replaced, it's in the next budget here.
Yes. So, so far, we have a current engineering firm on board, so we are working on scope and fee. So, pretty soon, you'll see a budget amendment, not budget, like a contract amendment, to get.
But presumably, construction won't start until August, or, you know, July at the earliest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that the bridge under Broadway, has it been replaced in the past, or something? I'm, I'm, you know, all that would have been built around the same time, I think.
I think the bridge report shows, we don't have any issues there right now. We have Uriah Nichols from ODOT, he would like to say a few words, he's the bridge, Division Four Bridge Engineer.
Hi, I don't want to keep you real long. My name is Uriah Nichols, I'm with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, the Bridge Engineer for Division Four, and I just wanted to talk about this, I'm not going to echo everything they said, but I just want to assure you that the center of Randolph Avenue is safe, and my big concern is this driveway on the south side, which I believe is owned by Mr. Luckinbill, and I've talked to Mr. Luckinbill and explained the situation to him, and he has been very compliant with, with restricting traffic on that area. So I think we're in good condition as, as far as that goes, and I don't want to come in the city for their prompt action in taking care of this issue. That's all I have to say. If you have any questions, I would be happy to help in any way that I can.
Uriah, you might explain to them too, on this, the engineers, Robert and Morally just explained, we have 71 bridges, they're inspected biannually, every two years, but somebody's inspecting for ODOT every year, but every bridge is getting inspected every two years, right?
Every bridge typically gets inspection every two years, so. So, this bridge won't get inspected for another two years, unless there's a critical finding on it, and then it'll, it'll be inspected more frequently. I'm not sure if I understand exactly what you're saying.
Well, the question that Commissioner Jansen asked about Broadway, uh, where, where the, where there's a bridge there in roughly Fourth Street Two, that would have been inspected either this year or last year. And as Marley said, the report was, was, that there were no structural, there weren't deficiencies at this time, anyway.
I haven't seen the inspection report on that particular bridge, so I can't really talk about it per se, I could go, I could look at it and email you.
Well, I'm sure we, we, we've seen it, so.
From the, from the last ins- inspection report, and they did um, cover Broadway in the last two br- uh, two years, and there wasn't any significant uh, problems there, they were able to inspect it. The uh, from last year's bridge inspection report, we actually have uh, repairs that are, got quotes on now for uh, Breck- uh, Bridge on Breckenridge, please, Breckenridge Road, yes. Uh, just at uh, just west of Thirty First Street. Uh, that was picked up in last year's in- uh, inspection report, and we've put those plans together uh, this year. And uh, got quotes, and hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll fix that bridge. The, the remainder of the bridges, uh, we had a couple of bridges that we had to do some um, uh, riprap work and some, because of erosion, that public works is taking care of. But the remainder of the bridges, with last year's report, were found in uh, uh, in uh, adequate condition. Uh, some of them are uh, what you would, we have a number of bridges that are uh, uh, basically they're older bridges. And if you looked at the current standard for roadway designs, et cetera, they probably wouldn't meet that if we were replacing them. But they are, uh, they're adequate for when they uh, for the date, the time specs they had when they were built. So for low capacity, we're all, we're all pretty good, we're all good. And for condition, uh, we are in good condition, except for this Randolph Street Bridge, and one on Breckenridge, which we are both addressing.
Anyone else? Marley, do you have anything else?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Aaron, you have till six fifteen.
All right. We'll see how much we can get through this, um, to try and cut down upstairs a little bit. All right, to kick off the nineteen twenty budget, we started this process back in February of this year, sent out requests to all of our department heads, met with all of them to get their feedback and input as to their highest priorities, and worked with um, city management to come up with this draft that you received back on the twenty-sixth of April. This is the budget summary, page ten, this is the um, document that you'll see over and over, it gets published in the newspaper, that shows what our fund balances are, revenue and expenses for the year, and projected fund balance endings. We have an increase this year in budgeted revenues and expenses of over nine million in each of those, and as we get into the numbers, we'll explain why some of those are this year. And, as we talk about the budget overall, it's kind of, there's a lot of numbers that seem really inflated, because there's a lot of transfers that have to happen to keep everything in compliance, and where it needs to be recorded, um, according to financial standards. And so, we took this overall summary and took out all those transfers, just to look at, what's it look like if we don't do all those transfers in and out? And so, on revenues, that number of a hundred and sixty-four thousand comes down to a hundred and two thousand dollars worth of actual revenue coming in, once you take out those transfers. Of that, you can see Personnel Services makes up thirty-four, almost thirty-five million, that's thirty-three percent of the budget. Operations are another thirty percent of the budget. Capital Outlay makes up seventeen percent, and then our Debt Service makes up the last twenty percent. Um, this year, we are projecting to have a du- deficit budget of a little over two million dollars, and we'll talk on the next slide about what funds do have an unbalanced budget this year, and why that is. Um, there are a total of seven budgets that do not have a balanced budget. Um, Special Projects, the first one up there, is a federal and state seizure fund that has to do with the police department, they collect monies in there, and as they need to use monies out of that fund, they'll expend them, they have a little over a three hundred thousand dollar fund balance. So they will still have a positive fund balance, if they were to draw that down and have the need to purchase anything within the year, they have those appropriations to do so. Um, Airport Fund, you heard Mike Cooper give the update of the hundred and forty thousand coming towards the terminal. That's already been awarded in prior year, so that needed to come back as a surplus to go against that terminal contract that had already been awarded. So that's why they have a surplus budget. Stormwater Fund, this project, um, you just heard about the update on the bridge, um, the stormwater that we have there, that's why we have a deficit budget in stormwater again this year, they have a little over, they have an almost six million dollar fund balance in stormwater right now. And so we need to take a million out to address that bridge, so that we can get that taken care of as soon as possible. Um, Nine One One Fund, this continues to be a challenge, it's been a challenge for the last several, several, several years. Um, there's a, quite a large transfer increase from Police and Fire over to Nine One One to maintain their operations. They really are at a point that they have a pretty low fund balance. I know that Police Department is working continually to try and bring some more counties online, to try and help um, bring that deficit down. And I'm sure they'll update us on that whenever we talk about their budget on the twenty-first. Um, Police and Fire Fund, both of them have um, significant capital items that are in the budget for next year, and they're um, funded according to their funding formula. And it's all tied to their capital purchases for next year, so. Overall, they all have the funding that they need to cover these deficits for next year. And when we compare year over year, the same numbers that we just looked at, that hundred and two down to the two million dollar deficit last year, is what the numbers look like. There's just a slight decrease, um, one percent down in personnel and operations. We went two percent up in the amount we were able to spend on capital towards CIP projects this year. And Debt Services, um, stayed the same at twenty percent of the overall budget this year. When we look at revenue for the entire year, Health Fund, we are projecting six point two million, as opposed to the five point five that was budgeted this year. And we've seen a trend, last year, I know we brought back a budget appropriation, because we were coming in trending high on medical claims. We're seeing that trend again this year. And so, we think now it's not an anomaly, it's a trend, we needed to adjust for it, so we worked with our health consultants and adjusted our health rates accordingly, our premiums, and what was happening there, and so, we're charging higher premiums, both to city and employees, to be able to uh, operate the Health Fund, and bring in the revenues that it needs to be able to maintain. Unit Municipal Authority, a three point nine million dollar increase, the majority of that comes from increases to water revenue, stormwater, and um, trash services. And they're really just based on trends that we're seeing come in this year, and anticipate again next year. Unit Economic Development Authority, seven hundred thousand dollar increase, we have an ADM TIF that was passed within the last year. And now that that's going to be finished being built, we should see uh, property taxes coming in for that, and then we will also see the payments going out to all of those taxing entities for the payment on what's collected on that TIF. The remaining funds are eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars worth of increase. Um, the majority of that has, is tied to sales tax, we did budget a two percent increase over the current year budget for sales tax next year. This year, we're trending at three percent, we wanted to be conservative, and so we just budgeted a two percent increase next year, from where we are at this year.
It's a good problem, Diane.
Yes, absolutely.
Aaron, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On the uh, stormwater, it does get a lot of the rain that we get, is it just a set rate annually, or does it change, depending on how much we rain we get?
No, it's not based on rain, there, there is a set fee in the ordinance of what we charge residential customers, it's actually, I think, four dollars and nine seventy-nine cents per month for residential customers, for um, the commercial customers is based on their s- uh, E- ESU or something. And it's based on their development, and they pay fees into a development basin for stormwater. So, it's collected through those different methods. All right, any, any other questions on revenues? Okay. Move on to Personnel, this is the first um, expense category, this is just positions that are budgeted. You see the trend, we have gone up one position this year. Um, there were some moving around of positions to more efficiently meet the needs of um, the priorities for this year. But overall, uh, no increase in full-time, we did um, add some part-time, or seasonal interns and HR, but we did delete some part-time and seasonal employees from the golf, as Spectre took over the operations of the snack bar out there. And so, those employees were no longer budgeted in the personnel area.
The uh, the part-time seasonal, I noticed they took a jump there, what, last year?
Oh, yeah, a lot of that had to do with how we were doing lifeguards, I know we were having difficulties keeping enough lifeguards, and so we went to more positions with less hours, and then also taking on some of that ballfield maintenance, we added specific positions for that that weren't there um, in previous years. Um, Operations, Expenses, again, Health Fund, the same expense that um, we saw revenue go up, the expense went up, that's that medical trend. So this is the expense we needed to cover, which is why we raised premiums to employees. Um, Unit Municipal Authority, that increase, that's, is due to water royalties, we've seen an increase in those royalties with some new contracts that have been um, signed in the last few years, and so, we're trending up there, and we needed to adjust that accordingly. Unit Economic Development Authority, again, this is the payout to those taxing entities on the ADM TIF. So those are just pass-through funds, whatever we receive is what we'll pay out. And then all of the remaining funds, you can see, we ha- actually had a decrease of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in operations. Um, when we look at Capital Outlay Comparison, um, Straight and Alley, we did have an increase this year. Capital Improvement, Street Improvement, all the other CIPs, kinda moved around according to those priorities that we received, both from management and from engineering, according to all the things, um, all their feedback and all their knowledge on all those different areas. Other than the Capital Improvement moving around, we had seven hundred and sixty-four thousand of other increases. That, there are really three things that made that up, we have a grinder that we need to um, buy for the landfill. It's gonna be about six hundred thousand dollars to replace that piece of equipment. Got a lot of usage during the last couple of ice storms, and, and we need to get it replaced, it's just been broken down a lot. Um, there's a Z-tron machine, that's also to replace some outdated equipment at Nine One One, um, very critical for them to be able to have that. And then we did budget for a couple buses with some grant match for EPTA, so that makes up that increase. Debt Services, we have two authorities that have debt, um, Unit Municipal Authority, the debt went up two point two million. We did pay off a nineteen ninety-eight debt note from OWRB that was related to sewer improvements um, in August of this year, or this last year. And we have three new notes that we've taken out in the last um, year, related to Col Lake infrastructure. EEDA, we paid off the two thousand and five, um, Advanced Foods TIF, which is the decrease of one point three, we still have two other notes outstanding. Overall increase of eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for overall in EEDA. As we move now into the Funds, Jennifer Smith, the accounting manager, is gonna come up here and start going over some of the individual funds. As you see highlighted up here, we have, all the ones in yellow are the ones we're gonna cover this evening. We have General Fund, Health, Golf, um, Unit Municipal Authority, Unit Economic Development Authority, Advanced Development Authority, the Event Center Fund, and Sinking Fund, and we'll let Jennifer start off with General Fund, and see how far we, we are able to get this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We're gonna start with General Fund. And this is our overview of revenues. As Erin said, that we are coming in approximately three percent higher on sales tax. So conservatively, we projected to have an increase of two percent. The only other major area would be licenses that we have a decrease on. Uh, this is majority, is the liquor and beer licenses that we no longer collect, because of the change of ABLE Commission with the liquor licenses, that happened last October. The miscellaneous area decrease, this is, we had, we had reimbursement of selling property and assets in this fiscal year, that we won't have in next fiscal year.
Is the sales tax apples and apples?
Yes.
With the tax increase, the three-quarters of one percent, that's been, that's been more than a year.
Right, we have a full one percent in there for Col-
It's not apples and oranges, it's apples and apples.
Well, we, we already had that in the prior year also, so, is that, that's correct, yes. Then we're gonna move to the General Fund expenses.
Go back to that one just for a moment, though.
Sorry?
On the grants, what are, what are the grants that we're receiving, okay, what are they?
We get a historic preservation grant.
And a library grant, too, I believe.
And a library grant, correct.
Those are the only, those are the only two we're getting now.
In the General Fund, yes. Any other questions? Okay, let's look at General Fund expenses. Our Personnel is up about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars in General Fund only. Across the board, we have uh, most of the increases due to our collective bargaining agreements, and of course, the health increases that Erin mentioned earlier. We have very little increase in operations, small amount for workers' comp, that's coming in, trending higher by history. And uh, we also have some computers that need to be replaced, plus some software, that we are getting ready to uh, lose the uh, the, the date of the software is out of date, so we have to replace those. So across the board, in every department, there is a little bit higher, we try to do that every five years as a, as a cyclical uh, item. And then our Capital Outlay, there's three main items that make up this number, which is our transfers out to Police and Fire. And that totals approximately one point two three million dollar increase from last year. We have the sales tax transfers out to EMA, which is the two percent increase of approximately three hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then we have a slight increase for our General Fund equipment, which we'll look a little more in detail at some next slides. So total operational departments, we only went up approximately four hundred and eighty thousand. Four hundred and twelve of that, we already looked at, is the, is the Personnel increases. So operations didn't change a whole lot anywhere in our operations. Then the General Fund transfers, we have uh, an increase of a little over one million, and that includes the Police and Fire increase of the one point two three million. And Golf, transfer out to Golf decreased by a hundred and forty thousand, and the transfer out to EEDA decreased by thirty thousand. Then we have the three hundred and fifty-two thousand increase for the sales tax to EMA, and then our sixty thousand for capital replacement. Which there looked at, uh, in detail on the next, even more detail on the next couple of slides. This is our departmental expenses, so this doesn't have any of the transfers or the capital outlay. This is just operation, which is your Personnel and, and your day-to-day operations. They did do some transfer of positions in between departments, which you'll see, some of them go up and some of them go down. There were two full-time positions actually moved out of General Fund that went to the EMA, so that's only large Personnel uh, increase, or actually it's a decrease um, that would show in this area. Also, the Personnel overall, of the four hundred and twelve of this four hundred and eighty, is due to that collective bargaining agreements and our health in- increases. So this is where, if you have any questions about any individual departments, we can go look at those individual pages. And we can go to that budget page and discuss.
My only question, in the Administration Department, I think last year we had a position budgeted for an Assistant City Manager, I don't think you actually filled it?
Right.
And it's there again this year?
We're in the process of posting that, so I think that'll be posted.
Okay.
Maybe even this week.
Okay, I was just curious if that was-
We do need it and-
If you're gonna hire that one of these days.
Yes, it's coming, so, we did generate, you know, nearly ten-plus months of-
So we did generate nearly 10-plus months of savings.
No, yeah.
But next year anticipate we'll, we'll use it all.
Okay. That's all I had.
Any other questions? No, we will move to the general fund transfer department. So we have our police and fire departments that both have increases totaling 1.23 million. VDA transfer stayed the same. Golf course went down by the 140,000. EPTA stayed the same. And then the EEDA transfer went down by 30,000 based on the contractual agreements in place. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll move to sales tax transfers. This is the full one cent for EMA capital and one cent for CA. And those both went up the 2% that we talked about earlier.
So we're anticipating a penny generates almost $9 million a year.
Correct.
Does that mean we have 18 million to apply for the debt on the call?
No. 1% is debt, overall debt, and then the 1% is CA. So we have one that goes directly to CA and nothing else. But then the other one is also the other debt that we have already incurred over years.
Will the $9 million pay off the 315 million?
Yes, projected, our financial advisor has projected that not just the 1% alone. Remember, there's water utility fees included in there. And the other 1% is for capital improvements, which we have, we have set our measuring stick at being able to pay off 315 million over 30 years and still be able to do 10 million, minimum of 10 million in other capital improvements. And Erin, do you want to elaborate or?
Any other questions? We'll move to the general fund equipment replacement. This is requests that we receive and they vary from year to year, just depending on where the priorities lie. And this is the prioritized list of the requests based on our funding availability, which we will also see this same slide in EMA, where they have their, their own capital replacement items. So we have some servers, ETN, public relations, ask for a server due to a technology-dependent type of issue. IT needed some new servers. And most everything on the list are based on many, many years of needed replacement. Some items are 10 to 20 years old. So depending on which item, they definitely vary in years of how old they are. Emergency management, we have new sirens in there and we've had that in there several years. That is typically something we leave in there due to eventually replacing throughout the city. Code, ask for a scanner and a couple of pickups. Fleet has a real-time system that they use at the service center currently, and that never got replaced at the landfill. We do have fuel at the landfill, so they would like to add that there. And that just never made it yet, but this will, this will handle that. And total about five trucks, parks, ask for also an athletic complex alert system and a gator with a spray. Street has several items, front-end loader, spreaders and.
What's an athletics alert system?
What that is, is that's, that's really a request from MyConexburg for emergency management purposes with alarms that, that you can communicate with. I think that's what we're talking about there.
I think a lot of it has to do with lightning there.
Right, like at the, at the complex.
It'll alert all our ballplayers when they're out there and we got a system coming in.
At the complex, they.
So many miles with the lightning that'll keep them, right now they run from field to field, say get off the field. This is going to help them get the kids off more safely.
I was, I was at actually.
Give them something else to ignore.
A softball field in Tulsa and it's, it was one long, loud, very loud to go to your car, get off the field. And then you wait in your car if it's going to be a short period of time and they can do three short to move you back onto the field if you're continuing play, which they did that.
Alert the, the parents to what's going on.
Two times within like 30 minutes.
Incorporate any, any informational signage to let people know how to respond. I mean, if there's going to be those tones, does this incorporate signage so they'll be able to understand what the, what the tones mean and everything?
We have for tech services, we have traffic BBU and traffic cabinets. And that is a process that we're going to start to standardize throughout the city. So you'll probably see that every year forward until we can get a better standard. The wayfinding signage is in, again, this will continue our next phases of the signage.
What do we know what we're going to put up this year, the way of wayfinding signage?
Yes, I think we, we have, there's a, there's a big plan and I'm trying to remember exactly what the big plan cost, but it was, I want to say it was well over $100,000 worth of signage. I know the signs that we have recently put up have been the parking signs downtown that note parking, that we finalized the kiosks downtown at the ballpark. And I think there was some additional signage that I've seen on Grand and Independence that point to the Gaslight Theater, Leonardo's. And I think they're working on the rest of the big signs. We have six big signs out on the roadways now, 412 and Van Buren. And what's holding us up on finalizing, I think, the big signs is we need some right-of-way and oreasement that we're working on. But do you have, what else, do you, do you know what else we're working on?
No, that's, that's what we're waiting on. We got the directional signs, the bidding that we got to get up and we're waiting on that.
Do we have a process for the community in order to be able to, I know we're getting, the soccer park is getting ready to come and things like that, people to be able to solicit to get their, their, their business or their, their park to be listed on the, you know, as far as a priority list? Or is it set and that's just going to be the way to do it?
Well, that's a, that is a good question. I know Lisa Powell was instrumental with ERDA, working with others and coming up with the, and working with.
There was a group.
Corporate design.
Yeah, it wasn't just ERDA, it was also Main Street. There was like a group of them that put together a, and I think they still meet periodically.
Yes, they meet monthly.
Yeah.
And I know there's, they're very responsive to individual businesses, but I think as part of the plan, the plan was not to list individual businesses. It was to.
Districts.
Focus on districts and, and things of interest.
Attractions, points of interest.
Museums, stuff like that. But we do listen because I know that early on, there was a question about one of the big signs out by Cleveland and Gharit that, that pointed people north, talking about retail shopping, which is referring to Cleveland and Chestnut. And I heard from some local business owners who happen to own Sunset Plaza. And so I reached out to Lisa, Lisa went and talked to them, and as far as I know, they were, they were happy after that. I think we changed, I think we, we had another sign that said retail the other way or something too. And so yes, there is a system, we probably need to, we probably need to explain that to the public better, what the process is for the signage, probably talk about the signage and, and I will probably get Lisa and First Team to help us with that.
On the.
I have such a question.
You did, thank you, I appreciate it.
Gerald, on the asphalt lay-down trailer, I don't know enough about the business, but we talked about the county having some kind of a vehicle that they could use that does a much better job of pottel. And we said we had something on order.
We got a truck and I think, I don't, Everett hasn't come in yet for.
Yes, it is. We just got in a couple of days ago. We're waiting on the paperwork to get finalized for.
Why don't you explain? We've got a machine for, for doing laydowns of like two inches.
Right, we've got a lay-down machine that, just like you see the big ones on the highway. We've got a small version of it that we're doing some of the streets that has no curb and gutters, that we're putting asphalt down. And that's what this trailer is actually for, is to haul that around. We haven't, we're going to move right now. We've been putting it up on a roll-up and it's pretty, I don't like it pretty unsafe. So we need this to be able to haul that around. Now, the patch track comes in, it'll be doing paddles. We could either chop them out and square them off. If it's just a, like one over on Cleveland and just one hole there, we can actually get it squared up where they'll hole up better. But it'll also patch all the ones that we're having on the rough roads too that, you know, weren't laid down. But it has a roller, has a tackle, so it has all the equipment in one shop instead of building out the back from there.
When that truck comes in, why don't we do a, like a show and tell?
Yeah.
Either a study session or announce a time where Commissioners come and look at it and maybe we demonstrate.
Should invite Tanny then.
Show it in action.
Yeah, I can tell you, we get lots of, lots of comments about paddles, so very interested. Thank you.
Any other questions about general fund before we move on to health?
Just to let you know, this, we'll have, I think, two or three more budget sessions.
Yep.
And so, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about it. So this won't be the last time, if you do have something come up that you want to talk about with general fund or anything that we're going to be talking about tonight or Thursday.
So this is our health fund, which is on page 87. We actually budgeted last year, you can see at the FY19, we budgeted a deficit of 112,000. And you can see how things are coming in this year, actually. Our expenses are way, way high and revenues are not coming in quite as what we, what we proposed. So in that, with the trend and industry trends, which we get from our actuaries and the, our plain, our claims history, we are trying to increase both revenues and expenses so we can cover the expenses that are truly coming in. Now it's kind of history for us. It's not just a fluke year. And the revenues, we had to increase across the board, to departments, to the employees, to what you'll see on the next slide that we talk about. So we do have a balanced budget, but right now, the running projection deficit for this year is coming in at 902,000 negative. So our revenues, if you look at the green, it'll show that the general fund, enterprise fund, employees and retirees, they were all increased, try, to try to cover these high claims linked years. And it went, it passed down all the way to the retirees. So the overall increase in revenues compared to this year is a $734,000, which is approximately a 13% increase. So our expenses for health, we have an increase of $622,000 or 11%. And that's due to the history and what the actuary evaluation stated. But all of, all other expenses are status quo. Any other questions about health? We'll go ahead and move on to Meadow Lake Golf Course. Michael will be here at the regular session, but he was not going to be here for the study session. So I'll go ahead and, and do my slides. If there's anything, when we get to the general fund upstairs, you, that you have for him, you probably could go ahead and ask him those questions. So this is on page 96. We have a balanced budget last, for this year, and we're projecting a balanced budget for FY20. Current running projection is not quite what we're coming in. Revenue's not quite what we budgeted, just a $21,000 deficit. Revenues are under and expenses are under. But we will keep an eye on this fund to know if we need to come back to you with a budget appropriation later this year.
Why do we expect the expenditures to drop so much in '20?
That has to do with the capital outlay that was budgeted for this year. We don't have quite as high in, in for next year. That was the building.
Yeah, this year we budgeted, I think it's 160,000.
160,000.
For a new maintenance building that we sorely need.
Just had built?
The plans have been developed and I want to say, is it out the bid? It's out the bid. My concern is that it's not going to come in at $160,000. So whatever it comes in at, we'll, we'll inform you about, but, um, we, I think we put 100,000 in next year's budget to, to, 200,000, so.
That's in the capital improvement fund.
Right, that's in capital, we'll talk about that.
Dollars in this for the building remodel?
For the remodel and.
That's at the clubhouse though?
That's at the clubhouse, yes.
So the 200,000 is the building we expect to come in.
Correct, and I'll talk about that on Thursday night. So here's where we're looking at our revenues. So we had a decrease in overall, we just talked about, that lowered the transfer from general fund to golf because they didn't have near as high capital outlay to cover. And the golf fund has no cash fund balance, so it is necessary to fully fund their operations. They do have a slight decrease in expenses, which matches that. Personnel, except for the increase in health, we did reduce the part-time staff by six that were running the snack bar that now Spectra runs for us. So our contractual services increased slightly and that was just to cover the management fee to Spectra for running the snack bar. And then for our capital outlay, we have a decrease of $84,000 compared to this year. We have a fairway aerifier in there that's over 25 years old. And then we have the small remodel to the clubhouse for 80,000.
You said a fairway aerifier?
Yes. Poke holes, I believe, but. Michael would be able to answer that better.
Non-golfer in the room, so.
Never golfed in my life.
Sorry.
So.
Need that.
That's right. Important stuff.
It's good.
Any other questions on golf?
Okay. Next slide, we have a couple of funds that are exactly the same from current year to next year, and those are sinking fund, advanced development authority. Sinking fund is a fund that's set up by state statute. It's used to, for the exclusive purpose, to pay judgments that are against municipality. We have an ordinance in place that allows the commission to levy any judgment that's more than 20,000 against the city, against the property rolls. And then those are collected over a three-year period to pay off that judgment. We budget 300,000 every year just to cover anything that may come in. At the current time, we actually do not have anything on the property rolls. Everything's been paid off at this point, so.
Do you have any idea why they call it a sinking fund?
Everyone has a sinking fund. Schools have sinking funds, accounting has it as well, and so.
Strange terminology.
It's called a savings account.
Everybody except the Navy, they try to avoid them.
Yes, let's not do that there. Advanced Development Authority, again, is $171,000 budget. The revenues and expenses are exactly the same. Mr. Cooper's contract is currently in place through June of 2022. That's the main expenditure that's in that fund. And he submitted the same budget again for his dues and travel and everything related to that fund. So are any questions on advanced development authority fund that I can go over for you? All right, I think probably, we don't have enough time to get through the event center, so I think let's wait and cover that one upstairs and pick up there, if that's fine.
All of these that you've discussed, will be just taken, approved, all of them with one vote when you.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't.
Correct, and we won't, we won't vote on the budget until the May 23 meeting is when we're projecting to approve the budget. But if there are any items that you'd like to make changes on upstairs, that would be the chance to make changes on anything that we presented to you so far, absolutely.
Well, not him.
We're going to pull the last, I think it's the last consent, and we'll put it on next, next meeting.
Is that the Williams submitted and restated?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Number 13, the proven, restated.
Yeah.
First sale agreement.
We're gonna.
In city meeting anchored capital three.
We're gonna restate some more.
We're gonna restate some more.
Or maybe not, but we're going to talk about restating.
I'm on item five, anybody, anything else? We are adjourned, we'll meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high definition on channel 112. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enitv.org. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enid.org.